Recording in progress.
The kids go.
You like the bus driver with Billy Madison?
No, I'm pretty late back. But when I get to the
All right, everyone.
Bull of us over and say, I got all day.
One second here. All right, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and afterwards, if we could please observe a moment of silence for Councilman Benedetti's mother who passed away yesterday. We'll be thinking about her.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All righty, if we could call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Mr. Deputy Clerk, if we could please call the roll.
Bond Crooks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Cabo Watten.
Present.
Pate.
Here.
Peruggi.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram Present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you very much. First item we have here is the minute approval of the October 9th, 2023 regular meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Next up, we have public comment for any items on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for all other public comment towards the end of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak, please direct all questions through me. Begin with your name and address and limit your comment to five minutes. Seeing none. Keep moving along here. Next up, we have from the 33rd District Court, application for a waiver in plan retirement health benefit systems, and I will defer to our delegate, Councilwoman Von Crooks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make motion to approve the 33rd District Court application for waiver in plan and retirement health benefit systems.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. All right, we'll go to department heads here. First up, we have from the DPS, Mr. Sargent, request to purchase an Axion aerial lift bucket truck.
Thank you, Mayor. Our small aerial truck is 20 years old and worn out. This truck is used for numerous projects throughout the city, including tree trimming, special event setup, street sign replacement, electrical needs, holiday decorations, et cetera. If approved, this new truck is in production and is expected to be completed in four weeks. We were able to piggyback off Jackson County's Department of Transportation competitive bid process for pricing. Therefore, I'm requesting to purchase a 2024 Axion aerial bucket truck from M-Tech in the amount of $194,900. This purchase was budgeted in the DPW equipment and machinery account.
Oh, it's a move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Peruggi.
Yes, Kevin, by tagging along with Jackson, what were the savings because we did that?
I mean, we priced out a couple other ones, about $10,000 difference.
Okay, just good work. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Chief Hawkins here, updated cost model for shared centralized emergency 911 dispatch. Chief Hawkins?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On August 7th, 2023, this body approved the City of Trent entering into a joint dispatch project with Brownstown Township for police and fire emergency 911 dispatch. This request today is for an updated cost model, which was outlined in Section 7, Schedule A of the Intergovernmental Agreement, which was approved and signed. This is an overall reduction in cost for the three-year agreement of $13,509.89. I'm asking to allow administration to update the joint dispatch intergovernmental agreement cost model showing overall reduction in cost to the City of Trent over the three-year agreement.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Peruggi.
Yes.
Chief, we talked offline, and I just bring into the public's nature that obviously some municipalities are no longer in the agreement, and so it will not impact us utilizing the 911 service because they're not in it, is my question. Does it impact it?
That is correct. As at this point, Trent and Brownstown are entering into this agreement, we're going to have excellent service and at a reduced rate.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Chief. Next, we have from our wastewater treatment plant, Ms. Wilson here, recommendation to purchase a Keckley duplex strainer.
Thank you. I am asking Council's approval to purchase a new duplex straining system for the wastewater treatment plant. We run our treated water through the current straining system, which then allows us to use it for other processes throughout the plant. The current one is still functioning, but it is getting up there in years, so therefore I'm looking to replace it before it actually does fail on us. So I am asking your approval to purchase a new one from Motor City Pipe and Supply at a cost of $20,695.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Julie. All right, we have a couple of late items here. First up, I will defer again to our 33rd District Court delegate, Councilwoman Von Crooks, for the fines, costs, and fees for September of 2023.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make motion to approve the 33rd District fines, costs, and fees for September of 2023 in the amount of $3,840.97 due from our city.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman. Next up, we have from our city administrator, DTE variance request, but I'll start with Councilwoman Pate and defer to her on this one.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, at this time, make a motion to move to a closed session to discuss current and potential litigation.
Support.
Moved and supported, recessed to closed session. Any further discussion? Mr. Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Benedetti.
Yes.
Cabo Watten.
Yes.
Pate.
Yes.
Peruggi.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Yes.
Von Crooks.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you very much. So we will recess at 7:06 PM here and shouldn't be long. Thank you very much. So we will recess at seven oh six PM here, and it shouldn't be long.
Such cold, dreary weather. It's like we're hibernating already.
I'm already listening to summer.
Me too.
All right. We'll reconvene at 7:37 PM. And we will, the second late item we have from our city administrator, DTE variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before council, you have a letter regarding Greenway project and plant demolition. This has been about a two-and-a-half-year-long process. Had a lot of hurdles along the way with DTE looking to get a variance with some aspects of the demolition of their property. It's been fairly cooperative, trying to keep things moving along. But we also wanted to make sure we created an agreement that was in the interest of the taxpayers and council. The good news is DT was willing to step up and willingly agreed to address many of our concerns. Some of them were the cleanup of the site, which they are going to clean the site up to the, you know, industrial level that we would expect them to. But they, it's better than what they would have been required to do, which is not very much, honestly. They're also going to do shoreline restoration. There's going to be a transfer of properties to the city with a small swap there that is definitely in the entrance of the city, should have been taken care of many years ago. The agreement, we are enforcing the demolition to industrial standards. There's no big bends or anything on that. We engaged outside contractors to go through this number of times with a fine-tooth comb. Like I said, too, they're cleaning the property up to Public Act 201 standards. Restoring the shoreline, I already said. Oh, the walkway, one of the big ones.
Don't forget that.
Yeah. So they've agreed, they're going to form a steering committee and bring a group in from University of Michigan. And they intend on building and maintaining a shoreline walkway that would continue out of Elizabeth Park going south along their shoreline area, which will be restored, of course. And then it'll either head back to Jefferson or if something can be worked out with the other property owner down there, then it would continue right to the Wildlife Refuge. So it's a tremendous upside. These are things they didn't have to do. And we could have ended up neighboring communities with a property that they demolished and took the buildings down and then just locked the gate up and walked away from it and didn't do anything for years. But they are actively engaged and working towards redeveloping the property. They've put everything on the table as far as where they would go and what they'd be willing to do as far as trying to redevelop it. And I think I hit all the high points on that. So I would ask council to approve the letter agreement with DTE and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement and be it further resolved that the city administrator is allowed to make minor changes to this document as long as they are deemed non-consequential by the city attorney.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean. Thank you all. That's a very, very positive step. So, all right, we'll go to our disbursements and statements and then our reports. I will defer to our mayor pro temp, Councilwoman Pate.
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the authorized disbursements of October 16th, 2023 in the amount of $1,034,382.72.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you. I'd also like to move to approve the financial summary, September 30th, 2023. The schedule of investments and cash on hand, September 30th, 2023. The historical commission minutes, September 11th, 2023. Recreation commission minutes, May 16th, 2023. Fire department monthly report, September 2023. And the police department monthly report, September of 2023.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to other council business now. I'll be very quick and just wanted to wish a very, very happy birthday to Councilwoman Von Crux today.
Aw, thank you. Thank you.
Hope you've celebrated well. You got to spend it with all of us, so how could it possibly be any matter, right? But hope you have another wonderful year ahead.
Thanks, honey.
And then same token, since I won't see you before, and happy early birthday to Councilwoman Pate as well.
And to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, soon enough. But yeah, hope you have a great holiday as well. So that's all I have myself tonight. And we'll get started with Councilman Cabo Watten, actually.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Real short tonight, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Halloween since we won't be meeting before that. So I hope everybody has a fun, safe Halloween. You know, when you're driving out there, just be careful with the kids as they're dashing around trying to get candy. Mr. Mayor, I hope you order up some good weather. So other than that, happy birthday to all here tonight, whether it's today or whether it's here in the near future, as well as everybody that has a birthday coming up. And last but certainly not least, Councilman Benedetti, my condolences go out to you and your family. So we're thinking about you, Rick. Other than that, that's all I have to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez.
I'd like to wish happy birthday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And also to Wendy and Councilman Benedetti, I wish you and your family my deepest sympathies on your loss.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Von Crux.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, definitely. First, Rick, and foremost, you had a wonderful mother, and you know that. And you took such great care of her, you and your wife, and my deepest sympathy and condolences. And I always liked your mom. She was always a lot of fun and, you know, I just, you know, wish you the best going forward. Also, happy birthday to Councilwoman Pate and the mayor coming up, both of you.
Thank you.
Something about the council, there's always a lot of October birthdays with mayors and councils. I don't know what it is, but it's great. So we're all together. Also, I'd like to propose the first meeting in November. I'd like to do a study session regarding some things that have come to my attention over the last year or so regarding the events and the entertainment policy that go on in our downtown and for different events. And, you know, set aside the street fair, the Midsummer Festival Committee is their own entity and they do their own thing. But we've had some events downtown coming up, which are wonderful events, they're great events. But it's, I want to talk about how we run them, who's responsible, who's paying the insurance. There's a lot of questions, who's getting charged what, the fees, the costs, the different costs to the city, different costs to the vendors, and what the City of Trenton is going to get out of that from all these events. I know we can't do anything going forward, I mean, right now till the end of the year, but this policy would start in 2024. And I think we need to have a policy set, the entertainment, you know, how long the entertainment can go on. There's just different issues that I think when we let some of these events and close our roads down for certain events, we need to be in charge of what's going on. And we're the, you know, body that does that, and I, policymakers, and I think this is what we need to do going forward. So on November 6th, I'd like to have a study session, if we could, at 6:00 PM before the council meeting, if that's possible. And discuss some of these issues and maybe we'll have some answers to some of the questions that a lot of us and a lot of the residents have. And I'd like to do that.
That works.
If that works.
So yeah, if that works for me, if anyone has any objection.
Is that good with everyone?
I think the one thing I'd suggest, too, if you just had like a list of questions, just get that done beforehand, too, just so we make sure we can get some of that info.
Yep. And I like to make that in the form of a motion, and I have a list of definite questions.
I would support.
All right. Moved and supported. Any further discussion for a study session next, or not next Monday, I apologize. Monday, November 6th at 6:00 PM. Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Councilman Benedetti.
Well, first off, happy birthday to you three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then thank you to everybody for your condolences for my mom. She was a great lady.
Yep, she was.
That's it.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilwoman Pate.
Yep, thank you. And happy birthday, Timber. Stephen, you and I can trade cakes if you don't like yours. If you get chocolate and I don't, we'll switch that day, so.
When I'm not interested in that trade.
Darn. Okay. You certainly don't want my gluten-free cakes. But anyway, really the only thing left is, you know, to just offer my condolences to your family, Rick. And just wanted you to know that the council has put a donation in your mother's name into the Trenton Firefighters charity on her behalf.
Thank you.
I encourage other residents, if you're interested, to contact the city with that address. And it's going to be a rough time of year for many people. And she would probably want that to help other people at this time. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Peruggi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd like to extend all birthday wishes. It's always good to have one. And then, of course, Rick, I shared privately. And I'd also like to extend sympathies to those who have dealt with the unconscionable atrocities that have occurred in Israel. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, we'll go to our other elected officials now. Mr. Deputy Clerk, do you have anything for us?
Our next regular council meeting will be on Monday, November 6th at 7:00 PM.
All right, thank you. Our assessor, Ms. Barnett. All right, thank you. Our treasurer, Mr. McCullough.
Well, it's been a while, and I certainly don't want to turn down a microphone. But the reason I'm here is for you, Timber. Happy birthday. Didn't know about, so you guys are bonus. So happy birthday to you guys. As far as the treasury goes, we got nothing. And Rick, to you heartfelt condolences. Yep, that's it.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Any of our department heads have anything for us tonight? All right. We'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address. Let me your comments to five minutes and direct all questions through me. Seeing none in person or on the Zoom, double check. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, so moved. All right.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered, 7:50 PM. Take care.